Everybody noticed the video is on, I did it right. Thank you Bill for the minutes of the last meeting, I have a motion to approve. Any further discussion, all in favor? Oh, that was too fast.
Wow. Um, no, I guess it's fine.
There was some.
No, there was just a date in the very beginning Bill, under the nets that we approved last week, it was five slash fourteen slash five, is that a new way to do dates?
That's a, that's a finger issue.
The Roman calendar?
But that's the only thing, so I don't know what the three, it was five, six, five.
Bill will send it to Barbara as edited, all in favor?
Aye.
So you'll send that in, little data. Mayor's not here, public speak ma'am, if you want to say something now's the time.
Well, you know.
We need your name and stuff.
Oh, Alexandria Boyne, Anne Plank Street, East Hampton. Actually, I was waiting to hear from mayor, so that's, that's a disappointment.
Unfortunately, because we changed the meeting, she had a previous engagement tonight.
Yeah, I was here last night, the same meeting, I'm here for tonight, so I was okay. I'll just keep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Ms. Gomez, welcome.
Is there anything we can say?
No need.
From last night?
No.
Oh, no, oh, actually, yeah, well, I see that you're taking it up down, down the bottom, I guess my two things are, is the new tax bill retired, so all at the gulp, and then the other one is I am curious as to what's going on out of Canada.
I think the best thing for you to do is listen in.
Yeah.
And at the end of the meeting, pull one of us aside and try to explain further.
I'll be pulled, okay.
Okay. New bits, I want to do old business first, these two items are on the public hearing agenda, first one is the police, fire department, chief of matter, go for it, forty-four nine forty, sure.
So, the first one, EMS incentive seventeen thousand dollars, the lion's share of that was a built-in deficit, in the budget development process to balance the budget, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me on the spreadsheet, the remainder is the city's match for the four firefighters. The second one, fifty-four eighty-three with care to vehicles, this year has been probably my worst year, as far as vehicle breakdowns, we started the year off August on middle-aged ambulance, which is a two thousand fourteen, had a check engine light come on, ninety-three hundred dollars, and a month later we got it back, that is over what my budget of the month is, year-to-date, ambulance repairs has cost twelve thousand one hundred, two dollars and forty-nine cents, I'm only asking for eight thousand, that's to cover the shortage in there, just to give you a little history, we run three ambulances, number one is a twenty eighteen, that currently has thirty thousand miles on it, number two is a two thousand fourteen, that's got ninety-seven thousand miles on it, number three, the chassis is a two thousand ten, the box is a two thousand, and that has a hundred and three thousand miles on it, when times got extremely mean, Mayor Tausnick opted to go a four-year replacement cycle, in lieu of three, so now instead of keeping the ambulance for nine years, we're keeping it for twelve years, at the end of those twelve years, they are tired and they get very expensive, A three has been out of service for a month now, luckily that's something that motor repair can do, and that's been working on that, probably about a five thousand dollar savings for the city worth of troubleshooting and repairs. The next one, fifty-four ninety, maintenance and service agreements, twenty-two forty, that's for a one-year maintenance agreement for our two stretchers, as you may recall, in two thousand fourteen, we started purchasing the hydraulic lift stretchers, so the firefighters are no longer lifting them, they have a lot more moving parts, therefore it's not something we could easily repair in-house, so.
Say it's backs though.
It's, I don't want to say it, knock on wood, but in six years, we have not had a back injury.
Knock on wood, that's great, except for carrying downstairs.
Can't get around that, but the, the stretchers have paid for themselves, the newest ambulance actually has a device that comes out, and it's just like the arms on the trash truck, it'll lift the stretcher up, retract the wheels up, slide it in, so we don't even have to hold the stretcher for, I'd say, knock on wood, we haven't had a back injury in six years.
So, it's a maintenance and service agreement, how was this not anticipated?
They were on extended warranty, because when we purchased them, they made a mistake under delivery, so instead of us saying take them back, we said, we'll take these, they weren't the models that we wanted, so they adjusted the price, and for inconvenience, they threw it in extended warranty, we were hoping to try and beat them, I was hoping to beat them out until July first, and then budgeted for the two, because the newest ambulance, that stretcher has a five-year warranty as part of the purchase price, so that doesn't need the service agreement.
So you wouldn't have needed the service agreement, have you gotten what you wanted?
No, well, we got what we wanted in two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
For a five-year, but I was hoping to extend it for another year, and not have to pay for an extended warranty that they would give.
So that's what you were hoping when the budget was created last year?
Yeah, they wouldn't have to pay.
Thus it wasn't in, I'm looking at, I just arrived at the train station, thank you.
Right, gone's over Morgolville.
Right, fifty-five hundred ambulance and medical supplies, that's an increase in call volume, the biggest thing, medical supplies, they all carry to an ambulance, it's a dirty business, we recently stopped using epi pens, because we have to carry a total of four on each ambulance, and everybody knows how expensive those are, so now, all firefighters, including the basic EMTs, can draw epinephrine automobile and inject it direct, like when you get your flu shot, we don't use, because the epi pen injectors would expire before we would ever use them, that was probably about, I'd say two thousand dollars a year we were spending on that, just to have that.
Is this a new regulation, that they're allowed to do that, or they got the training because of.
State finally realized that it's a dirty business, medical supplies, so they opted for to do that.
Yeah, the state says you could do it.
Right.
But previously, I couldn't do it.
Right, and we have to do, it's increased the amount of training, so everybody has every quarter, it's called check and inject training, you have to show competency that you can withdraw the epinephrine, and we actually use an orange to eject it, so that you still have, you show confidence, two of the big ones that, I put one of them on there, is the thermometers, so any piece of medical equipment we carry has to be approved for mobile use, cardiac monitors we have, I'm not saying cardiac monitor, they use in the hospital, the thermometers we have, which I think is crazy, are two hundred and ninety dollars a case for a thermometer, but because it's medical equipment, it's extremely regulated, they have to be approved for mobile use, again, I think somebody's.
Someone's bad commission.
Yeah, taken advantage of that, one of the other things, the most frequently used piece of equipment on the ambulance is the bag that we carry into the house, they go in, they can lock the ambulance under recall, you can only imagine the stuff that gets on them, they last about two years, we've been going on three, I need to replace all three of those, to, to me about fourteen hundred dollars, and that's just the bags.
Is there stuff in them for fourteen hundred dollars?
Very little, a big, big, called, stethoscope.
You think it's something with L L V or something?
We, we used to go that route, there was a company in Chickapuca called Iron Duck, the problem is, they're like a nylon, but the first time you go to a really messy scene, you can't get it in there, and the grossest part is with those, is you clean them, a month later, you would pour hydrogen peroxide on there, it would foam, so we don't use those type of bags.
So what are these made of, leather or something?
They're, they're plastic materials, so, I forget the fancy word, they won't absorb bloodborne pathogens, and they're, the biggest thing is the finish of them in the seams, they have a fancy word, but basically what it is, they're cockroach resistant, so if we go into a house with a cockroach infestation, the eggs get in their bag, and then every house we go into whispers.
We're learning a lot tonight, I'm not sure I want, I need a real hard sleeping pills, I don't have nightmares.
I'm actually enjoying it, but I don't.
Some people are weird, hey Bill?
Oh, whoa.
So, just on the medical supplies, that last one we were talking about, says an increase due to an increase in call volume, we had less calls than twenty eighteen, you know, by the tune of like, three hundred calls, so how is it an increase in call volume if we had three hundred less calls?
The amount they requested was based on about eighteen hundred calls, to make it, make the budget balance, in hopes that.
So it's not necessarily an increase, but more call volume than you budgeted, I had a proper statement.
Makes a big difference when we're looking at call volumes over three thousand, and we go to twenty-seven hundred, so, that was one, and then if we move back to the service agreement one, when Peg was just talking about it, so just out of clarity, all of our stretchers have to have a service agreement, they absolutely have to by law.
Statement, as part of our ambulance inspection, we have to show a maintenance agreement for the cardiac monitors, CPR device, the stretchers, the staff chair, they won't let us maintain that.
Okay, that's fair, I just wanted to make sure.
Do they all get inspected by some state fire marshal?
It's the Office of Emergency Medical Services, they fall under Department of Public Health, and once a year.
State?
Yeah, they send out an inspector.
So they get inspected. Anything else?
How, nearly so, how does the increase in call volume, I know it's budgeted, but that amount, how does that translate to staff, is that where, is that the budget money to pay the staff?
No, so what I do, I look at what, and I think last year, I don't remember what medical expenses were, I think the total spend for last year was over twenty thousand, so to get the number where I need to be, I take that cost, versus the number of patient transports, and I come up with like, here's a ballpark on what each call costs me.
Okay.
For medical supplies.
It's like a model.
And then, to make the numbers work, the budget amount was eighteen, sixteen or eighteen hundred transports is what I anticipated, that doesn't take it to the top, they love to increase their costs, but my best guess was, I think it was sixteen hundred calls is what I had budgeted, sixteen hundred transports, I should say, hundred calls, and we're going to exceed that.
That's just good information, when we review the budget, could, could you have those numbers for me, so that.
I'll have to redo them because it's on a scratch paper, but I'll.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just, just so that we can have those talking points, and I'll end up scratching it on my papers, but, you know, I mean, that's, that's wonderful information, so that when we have a new fire chief next year, you know, and we're asking him these questions when he's got.
Or her.
Or her, when we're asking them that question, we could actually have, you know.
Right now, there's a program, when we transport a mass health or medicare for patients, we lose about fifty, fifty-one to fifty-two percent of revenue right on the top, the state started a supplemental program last year, I think I got an additional twenty-something thousand dollars, so basically it breaks down what our true cost per call is, and I'm working on that worksheet right now, updating the numbers, and the hang-up is always the fuel cost, because they don't get that, I don't pay my fuel bills, that the city pays for all the fuel from ambulances, and those, because they idle, it's not a balanced consume per, per mile, it's per hour, so state contractor that manages that program, so I'm working on those numbers from now, so I'll be able to have what our cost per ambulance call is, our true cost.
Okay, good. Val or Jen, anything to say? We have, I asked Val to give us these numbers, so you can see where we'll be after we approve these three items, we'll be at a four seventy-five, three eighty-two on free cash, shall I take a motion to approve?
Okay.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing next Wednesday, thank you.
I'm looking to stay in, I don't want to.
Val, you're up, the seventy thousand four four nine is to cover the collective bargaining agreement, where we gave them insurance holidays, that's for the remainder of this fiscal year, am I correct?
Yes, the agreement was one full holiday for the employee's share in July, and then a half of a holiday in January, the seventy thousand is for the July full holiday, and I have asked the assessors to.
This past July?
Yes, yes, currently.
In this fiscal year, for this fiscal year, so?
Yes, currently my liability account, which is the account, the money that is withheld from the employees is put into, is in deficit, last time I looked, over seventy thousand, there were some timing issues in there, but, so the seventy thousand is the number that the personal director gave me, that she had for the actual cost of it, and the other half holiday, I asked the assessors to release the two oldest years of excess overlay, which they did, so as soon as I have the numbers from the January one, I'm going to put in for those to be paid out of the excess overlay.
Instead of free cash?
Instead of free cash.
I take counsel, which is very good. Well, I have one more. This is a three-year bargaining agreement, am I correct?
Um.
Pretty sure, so what will, this, if I understand it right, it's one, the two holidays together, the half holiday, the full holiday, what's the total cost that we'll have to budget next year, do you have an idea of that?
Well, next year, I don't believe we have any, because the cost of the insurance didn't go up, I believe the agreement says that only if the insurance cost goes up, we do it next year, and the mayor said at the last meeting, the insurance cost is not going up next year, so I don't.
This is very important information.
We don't have to worry about this next year.
So they have to pay the premiums that were enforced this year, next year, for this month, because the premiums didn't go up, they have, they don't get a holiday next year, they have to pay a premium, but because they didn't go up, there's no holiday.
It said, I believe, there was one next year if the cost goes up, but if the cost didn't go up.
Are you, because we don't have a personal director, you're certain of this language?
Well, I have it, I have it.
I just don't want to hear how many collective bargaining units pay, we thought it was every July. You see my concern?
Yes.
That was a question.
Okay, two-week premium holiday, January first shall receive the five-week, July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, number two, one-week premium holiday, which is the half holiday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty, number three, fiscal twenty twenty-one contingent, one-week premium holiday, shall receive a reduction in the multi-deductive health insurance in July, equivalent to one-half, blah blah blah, this reduction shall not be granted unless the trust adopts overall premium increases of two percent or less for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty.
Premium?
So that's it.
Two, unless?
Unless?
Did I hear that right, two percent or less?
The trust adopts overall premium increases of two percent or less for the fiscal year beginning July first, in other words, if it increases.
So if it, if it's two percent or less, they don't get the holiday, am I reading that right?
Shall not be granted unless the trust adopts overall premium increases of two percent or less, so.
Do you see what my, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It sounds like, it sounds like.
Yeah, but it's not an increase.
The insurance did not go up at all, it stayed level funded.
But it almost begs the question, like, did they intend if the increase is two percent or less?
More, I thought it would be two percent or more, then you get it.
Right, but it's almost like.
What they're saying here is that if the increase is two percent or more, we get this holiday, if it's two percent or less, we do not get it, it says.
I guess I'm not, I have to look at.
This reduction, this reduction shall not be granted unless the trust adopts overall premium increases of two percent or less for fiscal year, so.
The word or less is driving me crazy.
Yeah, I know.
It says unless the.
They adopt the two percent.
Could you have the labor attorney look at this, because I'm a little concerned about that language, and I'll tell you why, I don't want a bunch of collective bargaining members at our meeting, I'll be honest with you, because they have a different interpretation, because that word or less, and Jen shaking her head, she's worried about that too, do you see my concern?
Just doesn't sound.
Do you guys agree with me, am I hearing that wrong?
Well, they're, they're starting, yeah, they're starting it out by saying, there shall receive a reduction in the amount for help, blah blah blah, but then it says, this reduction shall not be granted unless the trust adopts premium increases of two percent or less.
Two percent more is what I want.
So, so if, if they got a three percent increase, they wouldn't get it, but because they got no increase, it sounds like they're going to get it, which is completely counter.
It says or less.
Yeah, but an increase of zero is not an increase, it's flat, so.
Right.
We're, we're okay because we're at zero, but if it was.
Any increase up to two percent.
Correct, but zero is not an increase.
My understanding is, we're not getting an increase, so there's not going to be a holiday.
Right, so we have time to get that. All I'm saying is, the language looks fishy to me.
Yeah.
And I would ask the mayor to have that checked, and the word or less suggests that it's, I agree with Peg, even though there's no increase, two percent or less is, okay, zero is less than.
Well, it's less than two percent, but it's not an increase, so you're taking that word.
I don't want their attorney to say, hey, wait a minute.
There's just too much room for interpretation.
Oh, yeah, but zero's neither an increase or a decrease, zero, zero.
And we don't have to worry about that with regard to this appropriation, but I was curious about next year, and now.
And there's no mention of anything after.
Okay, but, okay. Okay, well, you guys have any questions, obviously this is something we have to do because of the collective bargaining agreements. Do you have anything to add? Shall I take a motion?
So, I'll make a motion to move seventy thousand quarter, forty quarter hundred and seventy-nine cents from free cash to the health insurance liability account.
Uh.
With the discussion, I would just like, at the next meeting, at our Wednesday meeting and public hearing, for that to have been resolved, that language, we could talk to the mayor about it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one, is also a kind of a human resources thing, I remember that, I'm kind of glad we're catching up, these are permanent adjustments to salary based on the Collins, the proper statement, so these aren't increases for COLA or increases because we just want to give it to them, it's for this year, these are permanent, and it's permanent to the position, not just the employee, it really is the position.
Yeah.
I mean, is an employee, is the auditor getting more money because of, her time on the job, or is the physician auditor getting more money?
Well, it's a combination of both, because the Collins Center went through every job and studied it and decided which grade level it would be on, and they're like A through H, and then they have twelve steps within that grade level, and what happened is, the people who are on the old scale, the hourly pay rate that they have right now, was converted to the next, closest pay rate on the scale, which is a few cents, which is what the register is, and then in January, they got the two and a half percent, and everyone gets it at the same time in January, whereas under the old plan, people got three percent on their anniversary date, unless you're a member.
Unless you're already stepped up.
So, so what I did with this, and I, I discussed it with the mayor, and they had decided to let people on the old plan receive their three percent from July to December this year, so anyone who received their three percent just got put on the scale and did not get a January increase, because they already got the three percent, everyone else will be getting two and a half in January, this is what was agreed, you know, and, and so this is what the mayor wanted, it, it made it more complicated, because they allowed people to go up between July and December on the old scale, so, but that's what happened.
Did this add steps to, did the spreadsheet go out harder?
Yeah, so people were, and, and the other piece that I did is, people who were A nine and have been, and were nine prior to two thousand nineteen, and many of them had been a nine for years and years and years, means they had no increases for years, other than COLA, once in a while, and we didn't get one every year, and it put people that's lower on a fixed income, well, I'll tell you what, social security gets a COLA every January, some years it's three percent, this year it's less, but they get one every year, and the people that work for the municipality, if they're not in the union, a lot of them live in town, their taxes went up too, you know, their cost of living went up too, but if you're a nine, they got nothing for quite a few years, so, you know, my response is that it was only fair to give these people that got nothing a two and a half percent when they went on the scale, and a two and a half in January, bring them.
That's all the nines.
All the nines, there's like seventeen people.
And this is paying for the nines?
What?
What is, this is paying for the nines?
Yes, it's the full ball of that, so, and this is, this is what the mayor agreed to, I mean, when we had our discussion about how to go about this, to make it fair.
But, this increase, increases their base pay, permanent?
Yes.
That's what I meant, getting.
Yes, yes.
So if it's a COLA next year, it's based on this new salary?
Right, the budget next year begins where this year ends, and then January goes on, and there are a couple of people that are going to be nines again, I mean, or twelve on the new scale, there are, there's maybe three.
We are, when we, for years, Mayor Tausnick, even Karen, had debated why we didn't have some kind of system in place where they could be, where there's merit increases regardless of what step you're on, but that would require evaluations, and there was debate with different human resource directors on how that would be implemented, but to me, it just, you get to step nine, to me, it generates complacency at that high level, because they're not getting anything else, there's no one place for them to go.
Not only that, but I, in my previous municipality, everyone had hearing in except the department heads, and so everyone got increases, and at budget time, the department heads were the ones that got whacked, they, they didn't get hardly anything, and what happened is, all the department heads either went to other municipalities for more money or retired, so now we have a situation where all the people, where you experience the knowledge, the training, and the certifications are gone, and you have to replace them, good luck going out there and finding people with certifications, education, and knowledge to replace these people at what you were paying the people before, it's like double what they were paying the people, because our scale was outdated, and now we know, okay, in comparison with other communities, this scale is in comparison with the other.
Well, that's why I love their college report, I thought it was very good.
Right.
So, but those people that get to twelve now, which is the highest step?
Yeah.
They don't have any room to grow except COLAs again, right?
Right.
We have talked about those, the mayor reviews.
And this will happen to a few people that have been here a long, long time, and have been nine for a long, long time.
But they're going to get at least something.
Yes, they will be getting an increase back to July, and an increase in January, to catch them up for all years, they got nothing, and then after that, they go forward the same as everyone else to reach the top of their scale.
I think what you just said is so valuable, just say it again at the council meeting, I want everybody to know, that's why I totally agree, Phil?
Well, and we had a person, or several people, come in paying their taxes and complaining, one guy was saying, if, if you get any raises, I'm coming into the meeting, and I'm going to talk, and blah blah blah, you know, I'm on a fixed income, well, you know what, guess what, we are to, and have been for a long time, and our taxes are going up, and our cost of living has gone up, and we work hard, you know, the people in the city work hard to serve the people, and we're the ones that get stuck, every time it's budget time, oh, we don't have any money, sorry, no COLAs this year, can't give you anything, you know, and then the people that get the steps are getting their three percent, you know, so, I mean, the argument to me would be, even the retirees get an increase from the government everywhere.
The other thing that I can do, which would be counterproductive in my mind, is pay someone who is, kind of like a bargaining.
Would be what?
Well, they could be nice. Oh, same, you're looking at me like, that wouldn't be, it's not good, but it's there.
Right, got to be somebody to fight for them anyways, but.
Well, as long as we keep doing this, that won't happen.
So, I mean, then the other option is not to give the nines that extra step, but I think a people have been promised something. But I think if people have been promised something, I think it would be, first of all, it would be fair to the people who haven't gotten anything for a long time. And I think there would be a lot of discord when people don't do it. That's just my opinion.
All this that's been requested here, is this going retro back to July?
Yes.
So, so we're paying some people back July to 1231 and increasing their rate back to there. Does that impact anything that else we pay that's a percent of the salary, like insurance premiums and things like that if we go backwards now?
The only thing it will impact is the Medicare expense.
So we're going to have to increase that.
And I don't know if there was any extra put into it this year. I know last year we had to go back and get more money for Medicare because just in general, salaries were higher than what they had budgeted for. I don't know what was in this year's budget, you know, if there's any extra there or not. But that's something that we need to look at. And, you know, but it probably won't be an awful lot. Something that we can ask for a transfer if needed. It's .0145 percent sounds, so...
And then the other side of it, we have all these departments and everything else. Some of them are $300. Well, there's a tree overtime line.
Yeah, that's a retro.
No, I understand it's a potential person, but it's an overtime line, so that's kind of a different thing of what we're talking about.
Well, if we pay retro and they're a few cents up onto, you know, if they're going up a few cents per hour and they worked overtime, that has to be applied to that too.
Oh, I get it.
And some departments, we've had personnel changes. So some departments have extra money, and they don't need any money to implement this. Other departments are right there and they need money. So there are a lot of differences between the departments. Some departments have a lot of employees. Some departments are partially funded by grants and revolving funds. So there are a lot of differences in the amounts in the departments because of that. Because what I did is when I finished figuring out how much it costs, then I went and looked up what each department had left in their budgets and compared, you know, where they're at and how much was needed to finish the year compared to what their budget was. And people who had extra in their budgets, I didn't ask for anything. So I did like a two-step process. I calculated the amounts, and then I compared it to what was left in people's budgets to see if we needed money or not.
Okay.
So that it wouldn't be more than needed.
Okay. So the tree overtime line item, I get, you know, increasing his rate and everything else, but we're not asking to increase his rate unless it falls, is it under Parks and Recreation?
Yes.
So it falls under that. But isn't Cemetery under Parks and Recreation too? Isn't that falling under that row? So that one's separated out. So now I'm confused because we have a parking rack.
It's separated out because there's a different department for it.
But isn't there a different department under, like a subdepartment for a tree? The tree board? Isn't that separate in the budget?
That's, that's the line item for the tree board.
Right. But I only see overtime. There should be if we're increasing a salary, a salary line, right?
Unless their budget could accommodate it, right.
So their budget accommodated the salary increase but not the overtime?
The tree, yeah. This, this tree line item is only used when, when needed. So it's not a salary, it's tree overtime. I believe the tree, the tree's salary is within probably the Cemetery Department.
Okay.
This is just a separate line for overtime.
Okay. I don't remember, but I think...
And some of the people in Parks and Recreation are like seasonal. So even though they're on the pay scale, they only work so many hours per year. They don't work the whole year. So it, you know, it gets pretty complicated.
Well, I get that. And then there's their list, I mean, like, I don't really know about names, but like how many people this impacts by area?
My list was about 90 people long, and a few of those are not on pay plan because I listed everyone that I have on the normal payroll.
Okay.
And some of those people are seasonal. But, so it's a, about 90, maybe, you know, a handful of those are not on the payroll.
Okay. Now I'm thinking. I have nothing, I think this is great to have those employees that have been in the cell for years. Just as an aside, I wish we would get some way of giving those long-term employees a chance to have a merit increase of some kind. Because I think it'll help us with retention of those employees. Anyway, it's just me. Uh, can I have a motion, please?
Motion for the supplemental appropriation for the change to pay plan via the Collins Centers.
I'll see. Further discussion?
Hang on. Can I just request that we just get like the Medicare breakdown of what it's going to cost for the public hearing? It's going to be like 800 bucks, I'm sure, right? But, I don't know. I just...
Yeah, it's, the total times .0145. But I have to run, you know, I would run a Medicare report, see where we're at, and I'd have to estimate the whole salaries for the rest of the year and see, you know what I mean? And some of the salaries, I'd have to take like a, an average payroll and multiply it out compared to what's left, about a number of payrolls left, to see whether we need it or not in Medicare.
Sounds pretty complicated, Phil. I'm not sure you really need it because it sounds like a lot of work.
And for the amount of money, it's going to be probably...
.014 times, .014 times A and E one is what we said to do.
And since the Medicaid is in the 9,000s, there probably could be some kind of an interdepartmental transfer or something towards the end of the year if needed.
Existing money.
Right, right.
You okay?
Because all the benefits are in the 9,000s, so it may be...
I mean, if we do a mathematically multiply .014, whatever that is...
.0145.
It's $850.
Yep, that's it.
And then it might be give or take based on what you just said.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Uh, no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
This will be set for public hearing for the second meeting.
For which meeting?
In February 19. Because I didn't set it. I should have.
Was the, the other two...
They're already set. Yes. So, new business, review of salaries and stipends. What I normally do is ask Barbara to get us a breakdown of salaries and stipends of local communities, especially like communities for elected officials and boards and committees. So we look that over, we make a decision on whether we want to increase anybody. As I recall, there were no increases the last term. You remember that yourself? I haven't searched it, but I'm pretty sure we didn't.
Last term was an increase that we brought on Friday. We got our increase last year.
I know, but we didn't go any increases.
Correct. That's what I just said. The increase was a little...
I try.
Yeah, I think the cleaning gas wire, we've been at the same stipend for quite a while.
I don't think that's a stipend we review. Is it? I have to look at that. Inspection stipends? I thought they were dealt with by the city, by the mayor's office. I'm talking about boards like the DPW or the assessors. They get us tiny, that's it. So stabilization accounts. What I want to do today, if you both agree, is to begin this discussion. I will set a public hearing for these for the February 19th meeting. But I really would like the mayor here at the next meeting to continue the discussion. For the point of understanding them, the impact fee stabilization fund, as I understand it, we get an impact fee as she pointed out. By the way, if you have any questions on these documents, that'd be good information. And I wanted to see how our free cash history was because it has to do with where we might be with regard to whether we move free cash into stabilizations at the end of the year, et cetera. The impact fees, the cannabis history isn't here yet. We haven't gotten them yet. And that's based on, as I understand it, 3 percent of their total gross for a year. Am I correct?
Yes. And Michael just received a check this afternoon. The mayor doesn't even know it yet. So it was from Insal for $722,752.98.
Whoa!
And that's for the school...
That's an impact fee.
Yes, that's fiscal 20.
And it's 722?
The only thing is...
So you'd say 722?
722, 752, 98.
Wow.
So that likely will be the, that will likely be the amount we got for all four quarters, even though we haven't gotten the fourth quarter yet.
Because it's the other 3 percent.
Yeah. And I guess the year probably starts, you know, before the end of the year.
It actually started the day they opened in December 2018. So it kind of ends mid-December.
So just to continue, that, that's good news. What Val educated me on is we can't move surplus revenue taxes this fiscal year right into stabilization. They have to be certified as free cash at the end of the year. But because the word fee is associated with the impact fee, that can go directly into stabilization immediately. We have to vote it. No, am I wrong? You told me that the other day.
We voted to create the stabilization for the impact fee. Then we have to vote to accept, what is it, Chapter 48?
So we have, we have steps, but it could go right in.
And that acceptance of that mass general law, this can happen a year before you move the money in.
We have to wait a year to move the money in?
Yes. And, and like I said to the mayor...
Why?
You know, if the guy gives us the money after July 1st, I don't mind because it could go in the stabilization fund. But apparently he gave it today. And next year, when, next year when we get it, next year it will go in, it'll go directly to stabilization if we pass this new...
Superb contract. They owe us this money 30 days after the end of the first year, which was mid-December. So they're actually a couple of days late.
You don't want to send a check back, do you?
No. I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
Tell me what, tell me like 10 percent. Maybe there's a 10 percent late fee.
That's why we could not get it in July. We had to get it 30 days after the end of the first year. We have no option.
So the law says, what's that law that says we have to wait a year? What's the MGL?
Um, Chapter 40 subsection 5B. And that law allows you to take any fee and move it to a stabilization fund in lieu of the local receipts to the, to any percentage, but not less than 25 percent. And the mayor confirmed to me that she wants 100 percent to go to the new stabilization.
But we can't do that. You can't ask the council to move it until next year.
Well, my understanding was October.
Council doesn't move it. Once this legislation is passed...
Then it's automatic.
It automatically goes to that stabilization next year.
The flexibility is the mayor can choose between 25 and 100 percent. Am I correct?
She, right.
But that's the mayor's only authority.
Well, however, the legislation is written up when the council adopts it, tells you what percentage. And the mayor confirmed to me she wants to put it in as a percentage.
Oh, when we adopt it, we get to decide the percentage.
Right. So we have to write up that the council, the city accepts Chapter 44 subsection 5B. And under that legislation, all of the marijuana, 100 percent of marijuana impact fee will go to the impact stabilization.
So are we going to get that?
And it has to happen for three years before it can be revoked. So it's like any special purpose stabilization, you vote to set it up, and if you want, you can vote to reverse it up.
Chapter 44.
By two-thirds vote of the council. However, this legislation says you can't change it until three years. So once you vote it and set it up, that's where it goes.
So it's 100 percent of the three years.
Yes.
From what, go ahead.
So I had understood that we would get the check now. It would sit in free cash until free cash is certified in October. Then we could move it. So it's not a year, it's October.
Well, once it's free cash, you can do anything you want with it. You can vote it to stabilization.
Right. So technically, October, once free cash is certified, we could move it in there.
Yes.
Wait a minute. You just said we couldn't move it. Okay.
It won't go directly to stabilization.
We could move it in, yes. I just, it just dawned on me. It dawned over me, the same as it dawned over you.
Right. It has to go to...
What the legislation allows it to do is to be immediately put into it next year when we get the next...
Yes.
But in October, we could move it in there.
Yes.
That amount in there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you just vote to move...
Move, because it's...
...a blank amount of money for free cash into the impact stabilization account.
That's, that's an extraordinary amount. And as the mayor said, that stabilization fund can deal with impact, quote unquote. And one of the things she said, there is an impact on public safety.
Right.
So we could fund some of our police and fire budget out of it, which reduces what we need in the budget, which reduces taxation.
Anything? Yes. And there's percentages, the way the mayor explained it to me, is there's a percentage for, you know, different areas. So that can be applied to budget because the cost will be in the budget.
So she can, for fiscal year '21?
Mm-hmm.
Well, she really can't because she doesn't have that stabilization fund in place yet.
Right.
You can't budget free cash.
Right.
You can only budget existing stabilization.
Right.
Which is too bad because my goal would be to try and reduce taxes this fiscal year, but we have to have a place to replace that money. And I just want to say, although I'm very much in favor of trying to do that, I don't want to see our services cut. I don't want us laying off teachers and firemen or anybody because we want to cut taxes on the residents. Because I don't think that's what we're here for. We're here to provide those services. We're here to provide police and fire protection, roads getting paved and all of that. But if we have what I call excess revenue, and I look at new cannabis money as excess revenue, we ought to look at that to see if we could reduce taxes with that somehow.
Well, I think that's the point of the tax, I think...
Both of them, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's the point of the tax for stabilization.
But what I'm disappointed in, and I'm not disappointed, I knew this, is we can't budget what we could do, which I doubt we will do. I mean, you're going to explain this to me again. We could move, if we wanted to save $500,000 off our taxes this year, we could use stabilization. Regular stabilization would do it. And then put money back into stabilization. We could do that, even though you're probably going to say it's fiscally not a good thing with our bond rating. A regular stabilization account has something like 2.5. Morehampton does it all the time. They use a stabilization account to balance their budget. And I'm just saying, you could do that. That's the debate. Because the other side of it, you said that the bond companies really look at that. And if we start taking money out of it for operational budget. But if we take money out of that temporarily and put it right back in, once they see that, they know what we were trying to do. And I'm talking about just for this year because we don't have another option.
We're probably going to have to hit the capital stabilization this year, which We're probably gonna have to hit the capital stabilization this year, which will reduce the reserves.
Why do we have to do that?
Well, if I look at the other requests that are going in to the system, uh, there's gonna be about a hundred and nine thousand left in free cash. So I'm gonna try and ask, DPW put in a Union Street request for free cash and retained earnings, hasn't been scheduled yet. To get free cash, and I'm gonna ask him if he minds, and the mayor, if they mind if it goes to capital stabilization instead of free cash. Because at the moment, our snow nice deficit is only eleven thousand dollars, but we have to go through February and March yet. And we need to cover. We need to cover that with free cash. Now, we have over five hundred thousand VA leeway in our stabilizations before we get to the level that we want to keep in there to keep our bond rating, whatever. But I know that the mayor's gonna probably have some capital items for this year that will probably have to come out.
Say what it actually?
Yes.
Is that all except? Well, anyway, that's just.
If we don't do that, um, it's two hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred Joe is asking for from stabilization for Union Street.
From stabilization or from free cash?
Well, he's asking for it from free cash, and I was gonna ask him, he submitted it, but I was gonna, and I asked Barbara, you know, could we revise that? And she said, yes, she gave me the paperwork. So as soon as I see the mayor, I was gonna talk to her about it and ask her, you know, what her plan is for, for capital? And if it would be okay to do that from there, knowing that we have about five hundred thousand we can spend before we get into.
For the bond rating companies get themselves.
And, um, and then ask Joe, I don't think Joe cares where it goes wrong, but I'll ask him to, make sure that it's okay, and I hope he revises that. And that would give us, you know, so three hundred and seventy-nine thousand left in free cash. Which leaves some money plus for snow nice and whatever else comes up.
Getting back to the stabilization, that free cash, which is this year's free cash, which has been certified. If it's, come June, we have two hundred thousand dollars left in that account. That could be used to reduce the budgets and need for taxes. In other words, because that money's left over, that can go into a stabilization account and be used.
I think that's what this one is. But the, but, how can you do that?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying if there's free cash left.
For next year's?
For next year's budget.
Yes.
If we could move it into there with the vote of the council, and it's two hundred thousand dollars, and then she can say, I'm gonna use that to balance the budget. Because we have to decide on July first, how the budget is balanced. We can't anticipate real free cash or next year's free cash. We can do stabilization accounts. All I'm saying is that's my thinking going into the.
Right. And you could even vote it, I'm sorry.
No, let's go.
You could even vote it into the impact stabilization if you want.
I was gonna say, we might want to put less than a hundred percent of the stabilization into a stabilization fund. Put some of it into the tax rate stabilization fund. And, because while I get that there are things we need to address from a community perspective as a result of cannabis, I'm not sure it's seven hundred twenty-two thousand dollars worth. And I'd rather that go into the tax rate stabilization and, and impact everybody in the city.
But I'm not sure that's legal, that based on the contracts. That's what she was telling us at the meeting, okay? So we'd have to, we'd research that. The contracts we have with the state, the state sets the rules on impact, right? And, and they said, what is the impact? You could argue that the fact that we have more police needs is an impact, a direct impact, because of the cannabis retail. But how do we, I mean, the road has to be paved, I mean.
Why? And then you're saying, by putting it all into the impact stabilization fund, either way, we're pulling money, we're putting money back. Either way, the police budget would not be negatively impacted, I'm gonna do a bunch of negatives here. Negatively impacted, would not be negatively impacted, ergo, the impact to tax rates would be mitigated by the stabilization fund. Because they'd be using that money instead of budget money to pay.
So their budget would be lower, so you'd need less money for the taxes.
And then the levy is lower.
Whatever, if I.
However you do it, it lowers the tax.
Whatever, in other words, we have a revenue that we have to gain. There's so much revenue that comes in, and we use cherry sheep, whatever. One part of that revenue could be a certain amount from stabilization impact, certain amounts for tax reduction impact. And that revenue balances the budget. And if somebody questions, what did you use that impact money for in the budget? We can document, well, we have this police need, we have this fire need, and maybe there's something else, I don't know what else. Public safety need someplace, right? Intersections. New intersection of Ferry Street. Should we do that? Hey, it's right by.
Yeah, the mayor was talking about increased traffic to the area.
And it'll take the thing about seven hundred twenty-two thousand? That's for one retailer. We got two more coming. Which gets to my feeling that, Peg, uh, Val told me the other day that a hundred thousand dollars in our, of excise tax was budgeted this year to come from cannabis. Because she can only.
You can't plan.
No, they planned for at least a hundred thousand to come in. They did it very conservative, but that was planned. So that's in the budget, that's balancing the budget and being used. What I'm gonna say is, I'm hoping anything excessive of that, the rest of it, six hundred twenty-two thousand, we don't attempt to budget it next year. We, we keep, no. It goes to free cash and then, but what she could do, if the DOR says so, if you're correct or if you're wrong. The DOR says, yeah, you got seven hundred thousand dollars this year for one year from Insal. You can use that and put it in as an excise tax budget, increasing the hundred thousand they already have further, correct?
You're confusing three, there's three sources of revenue from cannabis. One is an excise tax that we get quarterly from the state.
That's what I'm talking about, that much.
That, and then there's this impact fee, which is seven hundred thousand. And then there's the signature of ten thousand fifteen we get from them when we sign the contract.
But I'm talking about the.
So the excise tax, right now, the first year, last year, we estimated a hundred thousand, because we didn't have a history.
Right.
This year, so far, we've received.
You have four hundred and thirty-eight thousand for two quarters.
Yes, that's two quarters.
But I think Peg is right, it's gonna be seven twenty-two, right?
This year, we can estimate, um, higher, because we'll have received four quarters. And when we do our tax recap, we'll have received. We'll have received the money, so we'll be able to use it as estimated revenue, you know what I mean? So we estimate more than a hundred.
What I'm saying is, I would rather we didn't use it. Didn't use it as a permanent way to include it as revenue. But let's fall to free cash. And then we can put it in the stabilization. And then maybe reduce the, the tax burden, like two and a half percent may not have to happen, so people don't have to have their taxes anything at all. I know that's a dream, but that's what I'm saying, could happen. She would have to make that decision not to estimate larger than a hundred thousand dollars. Hey.
While this is a fascinating discussion, I don't think we're gonna solve anything. Like, it's not up to Val, and it's not, it's up to the mayor, and I think we should have the conversations with the mayor.
That's true.
And, and further, um, I think there's a lot of options that we're exercising. This is one. And there's, if we're gonna have a conversation around tax remediation, we should have it around all of the things that are in the bucket that we're working on, not just this. This is a single thing, and there's a lot of levers we can pull with this, but there's also other things coming down the pipeline that we're working on to help people. And I, I just feel like, trying to solve something with this conversation is not, we're not gonna get anywhere.
I understand.
Right, and I initially gave her the recommendation for the estimated revenue, and I, I suspect we're probably gonna need, um, most of what we can estimate for the excise to meet our budget.
Well, that's the point, is, I don't want services reduced.
And we still will be estimating conservatively, because we don't know what we actually get until June thirtieth, and the budget's done.
So here's, here's, all I'm pointing out is Peg's question. Tax remediation is a lot of points, but this is on the agenda, and has to do with what can we put into stabilization? It's part of the conversation. So I want to bring up all these thoughts, because otherwise, we need another agenda item that we can bring it up in an open meeting and talk about it. And this is on, so this meeting and next meeting, I do want to bring up, what other ideas are there? I, I would like to hear those, because otherwise, and maybe down the pike, we come up with something. I also think it's okay for us to make our own, as we said the last meeting, we can ask the mayor, or recommend to the mayor, she tried this and that. Because it is her decision. But that's just me. I mean, I'd love to see the June, July one, that the citizens, they won't see it until January one next year, but they're not gonna get a big tax bill January one next year, because we've tried our best to reduce it. That's all I'm saying. And we have lots of ways to do it, but.
And my point is that people are watching this, and I think this conversation has been confusing, and we've already heard that it's confusing. When we try to explain how we're helping or not helping taxes, my preference would be, we actually have a plan, then we communicate the plan. I get that we should be talking about it, and that's great. I just don't know what we're talking about right now, because I don't have any idea of the numbers, and how this is gonna impact. If it's gonna impact, we may do all of these things and it doesn't impact, and people are gonna say, in the meeting on the thirtieth, you told us about it. And my point is.
I didn't say that at all.
Let's get the numbers.
I said, I wanted to discuss possibilities.
I understand.
Possibilities, does it mean that it can, it can happen, but will it happen? I don't know.
No, I understand. But my focus is, I want to make sure that we're clear about what we're talking about, um, and have numbers and be able to explain.
Well, yeah, this is just an initial conversation. When the mayor comes, I'd love to hear her point of view on, on these topics. The cannabis revenue is the cannabis.
Correct, yeah.
What is her idea on, we're gonna use it all to, we need it, you just said, we might need it, Val, to balance the budget.
Yep.
And, and my point was, we didn't have this three years ago, so what that's telling me is, oh my God, we're gonna have reduction in services, because we didn't have this extra revenue three years ago. So that's, I don't know the pressures on the budget the way you guys do, the mayor does. I just wanted to have the conversation, to start. So, we're gonna continue this conversation. I believe, I do need to have a public hearing on these. I have to check with Barbara, because it's been a long time since we, did we do, remember when we did capital stabilization? We added that a couple years ago? Did we have to have a public hearing? I might ask for one even if we don't, not advertised, but at least so that the public could talk to. But I have to check with Barbara. So I will check with her, and I may ask for a public hearing for the nineteenth. By then, we might know if.
Because I, I feel like, um, that would be a good opportunity to explain what these are and how they can be used in public hearings.
I think it's important that the citizens can, instead of using public speak, can speak directly to these topics in a public hearing. And we can set public hearings, ever, we don't have to put it into a legal ad and pay that money if, if it's not required. But we can still have a public hearing.
And remember, we still have to pass that other legislation.
Yeah, we're gonna get that request.
Before June thirtieth.
I have, I have to put the request in.
We just have to do it before June thirtieth.
Yeah.
And, and that's just, when the light dawned over me, it just means that next year, when you get an impact fee, I'm gonna go back once. It says impact fee, is that a month impact? One time? It's once a year. So they basically have a six percent tax. One point four million now. I like cannabis. Sorry. It's a lot of money.
Competition soon.
Well, yeah, but.
That's good.
Yeah, but at least, you know, maybe that one point four.
I looked at the chief when they came in and they were talking about, I says, he was talking about the cannabis and all the, you know, people and everything. I said, geez, everybody else would be walking around high. No, they're at home sleeping.
Oh, boy. All right. So let's, let's, uh, we're gonna put that on old business and continue the discussion. But I like, I think it's brilliant that we have these two things, especially the impact fee, because one of the things that, I wasn't a big cannabis supporter, but I liked the fact that they were gonna try educational programs, especially for the kids. You gotta do it, and as I understand it, it could be related to all drugs, not just cannabis. We can just pay for it, because it's, the school department can't pay for something like that, but, yeah, this is great.
I'm Hannah. Do we need to do anything with this sustainability donation that kind of did you approve? We already approved it.
What is that?
Did that get moved here, or did we just? We approved it right on that.
A donation account is usually approved in one meeting.
Gotcha.
Unless there's, because it just means that we're getting donations, and we usually don't reject those things. Donations.
Okay.
You need to adjourn?
Yes. Motion for adjourn.
Second. All in favor?